Good evening, everyone. This is the Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, meeting of the Springfield Planning Board. Phil, if you would do roll call, please.
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio?
Here.
Mr. Daniele?
Here.
Ms. Moran?
Here.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Here.
Ms. McQuade?
Here.
Ms. Choi, absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay. Phil, if you would bring us our first.
Just quickly, as a reminder, I like to do every meeting for those people watching the hearings. Due to the requirements for these Zoom meetings, the Planning Board will hear the items tonight. It'll be presented by the petitioners here. The Planning Board will then be able to ask questions. However, the item will not be voted on tonight. The Planning Board will continue the item, which will then allow the general public to view the meeting and provide comments either for or against. It would be brought back at the next meeting, which at this point would be December 2nd. Any comments received would be then read into the record. And if any additional questions are had, they can be asked by the Planning Board, and then it would be voted on at that meeting. So, under the first item, under "Public Hearings Continued", it's a preliminary subdivision plan for Whispering Brook Estates. Owner: Baldwin Street LLC, Engineer: R. Lebec Associates, scale 1 inch equals 60, and then the plan is dated September 2020.
Who's here to speak in favor of this petition?
Good evening. Rod Lebec from R. Lebec Associates, how are you?
This is Frank Fitzgerald. I'm also here attending by phone.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And who's going to do the presentation today?
I will, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Thank you to you and the Planning Board members. What I'd like to do, if it's okay, I can orient you to the plan, show you what's proposed, and then through the chair, be happy to answer any questions you have. So, can everyone see my screen? Are you seeing the plan on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We're starting off on the right foot. That's great. Allen Street is to the bottom of the page. My plan is oriented north, is kind of to the top left. I have a locust plan here that shows the Allen Street out here, the subject property, some of the surrounding neighborhoods, and the intersection down where the plaza is right here. So, we're proposing a curb cut off of Allen Street, kind of on the, we'll call it, the western side of the property. We're coming in, and we're planning to have a cul-de-sac. We are within the requirements for the cul-de-sac link. The cul-de-sac is back here. In order to get there, we'll be coming in and we'll be crossing a small wetland area. That wetland area is located right here. We have submitted a request for determination of applicability and received a determination from the Conservation Commission for the wetland boundaries. They're set for a period of three years. And so those boundaries have all been determined, those and the buffer zone. So, there's this bordering vegetated wetland here that we need to cross. We plan on spanning that with an open-bottomed box cover that will basically span the banks of the BBW and limit any potential impacts to the resource areas. And then we'll be on the other side, and there's an area that's high and dry up here. We've conducted a number of test pits in this back area, as well as in the front, and the soils there are quite nice. We anticipate that we'll be able to accommodate 18 home sites off of the proposed subdivision, three lots kind of up on the front here, and then the remaining lots in the back. As part of the purchase of the property and the overall vision, we're also looking at creating separate from this subdivision, an A&R, which I think the Planning Board has already seen, and an A&R for lot F and lot G. So, F being 1885, which is an existing single-family home, and then a lot G, which is a separate lot directly adjacent there too, to the east. We are planning at this point to remove the other house that exists there now, the single-family home. We, as recently as I believe today, there was a meeting regarding the removal of this house or the relocation of this house onto lot G. So, this house as it exists here is likely to be lifted off the foundation, a new foundation poured, and then placed onto lot G. Not necessarily super specific to the subdivision, but just to give you some overall context. That said, I believe we're meeting the subdivision standards for roadway length, centerline radii, width, and the normal accoutrements required under the subdivision control law. And I would be happy to answer any questions the board has.
I had a question. Is there... So, there's basically one way in, one way out?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And, I mean, from a traffic study standpoint, is... Because I can only imagine the thousands of cars that must travel that road every day. And what's across the street, the church or funeral parlor?
I think it's the funeral parlor, yeah.
Funeral parlor? I mean, so there's no concerns about the additional traffic?
So, we'll provide the typical trip generation information for the definitive plan process. You can assume, rough and tough, that there'll be approximately 10 to 11 vehicle trips per day, based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual. Just rough. We'll get into the details of that for you, obviously, but that gives you an idea of the approximate trips per day. Now, obviously, peak hour trips will be much less than that, you know, for the morning peak and the afternoon peak. As far as the use across the street, it would not probably coincide with the peak hours, but it could, depending on when the services are. So, that's something you can certainly pay attention to. And, you know, the residents certainly would ideally coordinate and cooperate with that use across the street. But generally, people are respectful of those concessions. And then, as far as site distance, I know that had come up as a question. So, we plan on providing site distance information as part of this project as it goes forward through the DPW review and through the additional Planning Board review that will be received as part of the definitive subdivision. So, fully expect to go through and provide all of those analyses so that proper decision can be made at the definitive stage. But as it exists, we feel confident and have already reviewed site distance and in general, trip generation.
I'm just going to jump in here real quick. Just to stress to the board, this is a preliminary review of this subdivision. You know, a lot of the details that the Department of Public Works will require when and if the definitive subdivision plan is submitted, you know, they will go through a number of those aspects of the project, including the drainage aspects and certainly the traffic. They'll look at to see what, if anything, needs to be addressed. For the folks in the abutters watching, I kind of like to stress this at the beginning of subdivision hearings, that although we certainly understand that people have been living with woods behind their house, and are often not happy that houses are now being developed, I do need to stress to those folks that, you know, under the subdivision regulations, the Planning Board is limited on their ability to deny a subdivision if it meets the underlying subdivision regulations, which, as currently shown, this one does. Again, this is only a preliminary review, so a full formal definitive plan would have to be submitted. And again, that would be an additional hearing by the board. Obviously, this site has some challenges, you know, most notably the wetlands. That is going to also require a review and approval from the Springfield Conservation Commission, you know, because this is actually crossing wetlands. So, that will need to be reviewed. So, again, just wanted to stress that in addition to this review, there will be another full review by the Planning Board and more kind of probably input from the Department of Public Works with regards to, as I mentioned in my analysis, they're proposing a couple of drainage structures on the site. You know, DPW is going to have to review those and approve to ensure that they're going to adequately address the drainage issues and well as, you know, long-term maintenance. So, just wanted to throw that out.
If I may, if I may, address, this is Frank Fitzgerald, and I, as Phil Dromi points out, there's a process of further review here. We have had some contact with the neighborhood. We intend to share these further review with the neighborhood with meetings and so that they're fully aware of what's happening and can get their input into what's happening.
Thank you. Are these going to be... How many bedrooms in the house, please? Have you decided yet?
We have not decided specifically. Charlie Richards and I are working on that for both of the LLCs. We do probably three to four bedrooms, standard.
Two-car garage, one-car garage?
Most often, two-car garages would make sense. One cars are tough.
Have you thought about landscaping?
In general. And we want to... I can speak for Frank, I think, in that we've communicated about how to properly buffer the neighbors to the east. We've also spoken about trying to maintain as much vegetation between the first two lots on the left and the plaza. It is important. We even discussed potentially incorporating restrictions on some of these back of the lots, that type of thing, so that we can ensure the least impact visually from the surrounding neighbors. The other thing that is interesting is we do have a little bit of a grade change as we go into the far side of the wetland here. So, we'll be having a little bit of a cut for the roadway and for some of the houses, which would also allow us to further buffer the proposed lots, at least on the east side, from the neighborhood, you know, now and then. So, we're going to be working with them, communicating, as Frank had said, prior to getting to the definitive. I know they've already had a couple of meetings, and we'll take part in those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question, Rico. I was going to say, if this passes and it goes through, say, you start, say, in March 2021, are you going to do this project all at once? It might take a couple of years? Or how long will this take? Are you going to do it in sections or the whole thing?
This is Frank. It's likely to go lot by lot as the lots are sold. That will drive the construction or the timing.
So, this might take five to 10 years, you're saying? You're not just going to build all the houses within a year or two?
No, I don't... That could happen, but I couldn't speculate as to how fast it would be. The one thing that the land acquisition and the cost of the road and the compliance with all the requirements sort of drives the type of house that would have to be built, which this lends itself to a higher-end house and with bedrooms, two-car garages, and that kind of thing. So, it may take some time to do it, but obviously, the market's fairly aggressive right now with people looking for homes, so it may go a little faster.
So, will the roads be completed before you start building that road, the cul-de-sac there? All that'll be done within a year or so, if you get the okay's back next month?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, just so the board's aware, you know, once a subdivision is approved, the developer is required to enter into a performance agreement to ensure that the road is completed. That's really kind of the purview of the Planning Board, that the style of houses and, you know, that's good information. But the road is really what falls under the purview of the Planning Board. So, as part of the, you know, once the definitive plan is approved, before construction can take place, the developer is required to enter into a performance agreement and put up bonding in the amount that DPW determines would be the cost of doing the road. So, if two years down the road, the developer, you know, decides not to finish, the city can utilize that money to go in and finish the road. And then, at the end of the process, the road will become a public way and then also maintained by the city.
Okay. Do any other members of the board have any other questions? If not, I would accept a motion to continue this hearing.
Motion to continue. Thank you. Seconded. Phil, if you would do roll call?
Motion to continue the preliminary subdivision review for Whispering Brook Estates. Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi is absent.
Thank you.
This item will be continued to the December 2nd Planning Board meeting.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay. Under the second public hearings, new, a site plan review, the address for 670, also known as 680 Union Street and 48 Eastern Avenue. This is for the construction of a new building for a proposed public school. The petitioner is the City of Springfield.
Hello. This is Peter Garvey, Director of Capital Asset Construction for the City of Springfield. I just want to thank you guys for getting on a Zoom call. We do have a presentation. I just want to point out that we've had probably six to eight neighborhood meetings. We've met with the community leaders in the area to go through our plan. We continue to do that. So, with further ado, I'll have the designers start with their presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is Neil Harrigan from Denisco Design. Rick is also on the call. I'm trying to open up my presentation here.
You should be able to share your screen.
I'm trying. Okay, I'm having a little trouble here. See, rather I have to record the conversation, I don't want to do that. Ben on the call, do you have...
I know you guys sent it to me as well, if you need to. I think I can find it in my email.
Just will not share.
Does Neil need to be made a presenter?
Well, it should already be. Try that. I just switched to multiple participants, but you should be able to share. Again, I can look for it in my email here and bring it up if I... I know it was sent to me.
And now I can do it. Okay.
You got it?
I got it now.
Okay.
It's in privacy setting. All right, can you see the screen now?
Not yet, Neil.
It's coming up.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry about the delay. Again, I'm Neil Harrigan for Denisco Design. Rick Rice is also on the call from Denisco. Thank you for taking the time to have us here. Just a quick overview of the DeBerry School. As some of you may or may not be aware of it, we're just going to do a quick overview, some site plans, then talk a little bit about traffic signage. So, the DeBerry School is in the Old Hill neighborhood of Springfield. This is the existing school right here. It is bounded by Union Street, Monroe Street, and Eastern Ave., and then some house lots to the west. The proposal is to essentially build the new DeBerry School on the DeBerry Park, which is in this location, and keep the existing school running while we're building the new school. And then, once the new school is complete and the students and teachers move over, then we can tear down the old school, build the parking lot, and some of the access roads here. So, in general, so this is... Union Street will be the main drop-off for the buses. We have a dedicated bus loop right off of Union. Union, as you probably are aware, is a one-way street. So, the site circulation is generally... We've petitioned to convert Monroe, which is the northern street, also to one ways in the opposite direction. So, it'll go from west to east, whereas Union goes from east to west. So, the bus drop-off will be here. Each school have their own entrances. In the middle will be common, shared spaces. There'll be a large 150-car parking lot for the teachers and visitors. There'll be also some dedicated parking up front and handicap parking for visitors. On the Monroe side will be, we've added a live parking lane, so we pushed the curb in about eight feet to allow parents to drop off their kids and stay out of the travel lanes. And also, each school have an entrance for the parent drop-off on the north side of the school. And here's a blow-up of the first-floor plan. So, essentially, these are the front doors on the south side, one for each school. The left side would be the Homer School. The right side would be the DeBerry School. And in the middle, other shared things. So, typically, the first floor will have the offices, which will control the entries. And then, in the academic area, which is this purple area, will be pre-kindergarten. There's some special education classrooms here and kindergartens. Something similar on the DeBerry side. The stuff that's in the middle will be shared. It'll also be the stuff that's accessible to the public, probably after school hours and maybe weekends. There's a gymnasium and a large cafeteria with a stage. The second floor will have, in the middle, will be a media center, which is a library, art classrooms, some music classrooms, all that in the shared middle area. And then, the academic wings will have a mental health suite, as well as the first and second grade. Similar on both sides. Third floor, mostly academics, will have third, fourth, and fifth grade, a literary library in the middle, and some science classrooms. And that's about it. Some... So, these are just some preliminary renderings of what it would look like from Union Street. Essentially, the materials we'll be using will mostly be masonry, so the academic areas are these brick, big brick ends to the building, brick wings, mostly red brick with some lighter brick accents. The middle part will be a lighter porcelain tile material. And then, from the Monroe Street side, again, also, the academic areas will be mostly brick and concrete masonry units. And then, the gym will be, this is all concrete masonry, it's in some metal panels. So, a lot of masonry. It's mostly masonry, like most of the schools in Springfield. This is more of a perspective view of from Union Street. This is a view from the Monroe Street, looking at the gymnasium in the middle. Okay. So, some site plans. So, this is kind of an overall site plan showing the grading. All of the stormwater and stuff will be handled onsite through stormwater recharge. I think it's been designed for the 50-year storm and can potentially take most of the 100-year storm. And then, we have some material layout. We just wanted to show some of the fencing and stuff. So, all of these playground areas will be fenced in all the way around here like that, so that there will be some security when the kids are out there. The bus drop-off will not, so this will be accessible. And there will also be fencing around the parking as well. How much do I have on here? Planting plans. There, I think the general planting plan is to have the larger deciduous trees along the perimeter, and there'll be smaller bushes essentially closer to the building, not as high plantings. The idea is to kind of have visual access, to maintain all the visual access without using dense planting near the building. And I guess we have, just want to talk a little bit about the traffic signs. So, we've already petitioned to change Monroe Street to one way. So, essentially, right now, it's two ways. But with the school drop-off, it was deemed to be much safer to have it one way. So, when the parents do drop off their kids, they'll be on the right side, and the kids can exit right onto the sidewalk rather than crossing the street if there was a two-way and they were going the other direction. So, the sign essentially will have, we'll have to be adding one-way signs, obviously, at the Hancock End, as well as some no-parking signs. I think there's no parking along where this live parking is during school hours. But there is parking on the opposite side, I think, nine to eight or something like that. Maybe it's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then, there's going to be a little bit of rework here at this intersection of Eastern Ave. and Monroe Street. We've necked it down, so we've kind of pulled the curb in more, so it's a shorter crosswalk. So, it also kind of gives you a little bit more room to see oncoming traffic when you're making a left turn. And I think that's it for our slides. I don't know if there are any questions?
Hi, it's Rosemary. Can you tell me a little bit about the fencing? Is it the same that's going to be around the playground as opposed to the parking? Is it solid? What's the fencing like?
I think a lot of it will be an aluminum picket-type fence. I think mostly about four feet tall around the playgrounds. At some areas, it'll be taller, I think, along Eastern Ave. It might be six feet tall.
We do have the solid fencing along the houses at the east end of the parking lot.
Yeah, that's true. So, at this end, where the headlights can impact the neighbors, we're going to do a solid vinyl fence, probably four or five feet tall.
How many kids would the whole facility hold?
Well, there's... Each school will be 400 students, K through five, and there'll be 60 kids in each school pre-K. So, it'll be 920 total.
And just real quick, I mean, just looking at the plans that we have, I mean, it looks beautiful for that whole area, the way it's going to be developed. I was just curious. You said you met with the community members a number of times. Just wondering what they had to say and how they felt about the whole project.
Well, the biggest concern was them, is we relocated the park from the existing DeBerry Park over to a location on Eastern Avenue and, or, excuse me, King Street and Wilberham Ave. We discontinued the street. So, there's a lot of work going on in the community. The city has started the demolition of the MCDI. So, it's a whole master plan of what's going on in the community. So, the community was engaged, not only in the school, but the whole master plan of the area. So, it was... Everyone's excited about getting a new school. The school replacing is 1950 vintage and early 1900s for Homer Street. So, there was a lot of excitement in the neighborhood about the projects that are going on within that neighborhood.
Thank you.
How many elevators will there be in the school? One for each school?
Yeah, one for each school. There'll be one for each school.
Okay. I saw only one, but my eyes don't see all that well, so...
So, this is an elevator here, and then this is an elevator here.
Oh, okay, I missed that one. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really trying to balance the schools. Whatever one school has, the other school has. They're very, they're like identical twins.
We're working closely with the Mass School Building Authority. They have design standards, so they have it pretty dialed in to make sure there's equity between the two schools and the shared spaces are well-thought-out. It's not only a building, they're very instrumental in the educational and planning of it. The educational planning of it probably takes about 30% to 40% of our effort, and the building actually takes about anywhere from 60% to 70%. So, it's a collaborative effort between this Mass School Building Authority and the city.
I like the traffic pattern. It's nice. Even though there's a lot of students in those two buildings, I'm going to guess the majority of those kids are walkers because they both are community schools. At least, I'd say, more than half of them are probably walkers, if anyone knows that for sure, but... But elementary schools are, they are community-based schools. So it's your neighborhood schools, boundary schools.
I like the one-way on each side. I agree with you.
Yeah.
So that they're not crossing opposite-looking both ways, that type of thing. Yeah.
Smart.
Drop-off is totally on the opposite side of where the, the buses are too, which is.
All right. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to add? Board members or presenters?
This is Rico. I was going to say, how many parking spaces do you have about parking spaces?
There are a total of a hundred and eighty-seven parking spaces.
One eighty-seven?
Yeah.
You can reduce it to one eighty-five. We could maybe help you put a couple of bocce courts there so the kids, their parents there in the springtime and fall time, bring the kids to play with their parents and grandparents and bring it together through the sport of bocce. And I'll help you with that if that's a idea. Yeah, two parking spaces won't hurt anything.
We've got, we've got some spaces aligned for, for walkways down the middle. We could convert those.
All right. Well, if you need some help, call Rico Daniele.
Thank you, Rico.
Say what?
All right, if I, if there are no other questions or concerns or presentation, I will accept a motion to continue this hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing.
Second.
It's been seconded. Phil, if you would do roll call?
Voting on a motion to continue the site plan review for six seventy Union Street. Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi is absent. So again, this will be continued until the December second hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Non subs, Phil?
I actually do not have any, so.
Oh.
On that note, you know, we do, obviously, these, these two items will be brought to you, brought back to you at the December second hearing. We also have the, the proposed Main Street and Convention Center overlay district that we're, will, will be presenting to you on the second as well. So, so on that note, I, I hope everybody has a happy and safe Thanksgiving and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. So I could just get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. All right. Same happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.